First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Can everybody hear me okay? Okay.
Thank you, sir.
With the adoption of the agenda, I know we have the gentleman here tonight regarding the reassessment, so there's been a suggestion, and I think it's a good suggestion for a few changes, and since we're all here, we can make changes to the agenda. I would suggest that after the adoption of the agenda, we have a brief public comment period, as we have a good turnout this evening. And then for the work session items, we make the reassessment agreement with Wingate and Associates, the first item of business, the CARES Act distribution, the second item of business, and the financial and long range planning discussion, the third item of business. And just for the sake of housekeeping, I would make that in the form of a motion. Do I have a second, please?
No second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. So we've worked through the adoption of the agenda. That takes us to the public comment period. If anyone wishes to speak, please raise your hand. I'll identify you. You can approach the microphone. Please state your name and the district that you're from, and keep your comments to about three minutes, and we should be all set. And I also do ask that you address your comments to the board. If anyone wishes to speak, now would be the time to raise your hand. Yes, Mr. Sutton?
Good evening. Kerry Sutton from Piedmont District. I'm actually here today to talk about one of the items on your CARES Act list. We had proposed in Sperryville to put in a Sperryville hotspot to allow the entire downtown to be Wi-Fi accessible. And here's why. In March, when COVID started hitting, I had opened up my Wi-Fi at my business in downtown Sperryville to anybody who wanted it. My user ID, my passwords on my back shed, and I invited anybody to come to the business and use it. And they did. I had teachers back there thanking me that they could actually teach their classes. I had kids taking their AP tests, college kids coming down to do some schooling down there. I've had teleworkers since COVID down there using my Internet to actually do their jobs. Just prior to that, we were organized very fast, and we had started a conversation with Comcast to figure out, how can we put hotspots down Main Street for our vendors? Then COVID kicked in, and I just continued that discussion with Comcast to talk, how about making the entire Main Street a hotspot, a permanent hotspot? Over several months, we've worked through kind of the details of a plan, how it might work, what the potential cost would be, and we've got a proposal. It totals about $37,000 for a two-year pilot. Most of that funding is upfront, putting equipment on buildings. So the equipment would actually be located on my building. The other end would be Happy Camper and the rescue squad, and the other end would be the corner store. All of you agreed to actually do this. It's certainly a unique opportunity. And the reason I think we should do it is because the schools go into AMB, you're going to have kids who are going to need to take classes, they're going to need access to Internet. We all know that's not great, access to Internet outside of the burgs. So we can actually light up the entire downtown area, including all the parking lots. Kids can come down there, teachers can come down there and use the Internet for free. We also have lots of teleworkers. I actually will argue that this is a great economic development tool for Sperryville right now. You're having companies and governments realizing that telework works, and lots of folks would love to stay in their homes out here, or they'd love to buy homes out here. I understand the real estate market out here is doing pretty well for that reason. This could give them access to the Internet and encourage people who are generally well-educated, generally well-paid, often with families, bringing those dollars back out to our village. And I think it'd be a great tool for do that. I've actually proposed, it's a two-year proposal. We've actually been working with a couple organizations who might fund parts of it, so we can do a cost share in partnership with the county if they're interested. And then after the two years that it works, we can actually talk to the community about maintaining that through the, I should have mentioned, this is all through this Sperryville Community Alliance. We could talk to the community about maintaining that and actually have the businesses downtown to continue to fund the monthly fees to keep their service going. So with that, I would encourage you to look at that proposal. I have details. If you need some more details about it, I think I sent them to Gary and Christine. But thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton. Anybody else wishing to speak? Yes, Teresa.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'm Teresa Wood with the Hampton District. I'm here this evening representing businesses in Rappahannock. I think you all have before you a proposal that we put together, actually, there are two of them, for funding for our business community, which also will carry over into the entire community, our profit and nonprofit partners as well. And it would take a lot of time for me to go through that right now, and I don't want to take more than my three minutes. So I'm not going to bore you with all the details. You have them in front of you already. What I would say to you is that these proposals, and I'll take the one for the marketing first, the digital marketing, they're not geared just to benefit the businesses or the tourist industry in Rappahannock. If you did read the letter, I know it was quite long, and I apologize, but if you did read the letter, one of the things I say, and I say over and over again, is that, you know, the accountant has business in this county because the art gallery is open. The housekeepers have a job and feed their families because the ends and B&amp;Bs are open. And this is the circularity of our economy in Rappahannock County. It's a small community, and these dollars that come in, they parlay into so many other things that benefit the community. So I just want to be clear that we are not just talking about the shops in Little Washington or the lovely places along Main Street in Sperryville. We're talking about the totality of our community. That's what this is about. And then the second proposal that you have before, and I'm open, I'm here for questions if anybody has questions tonight. It's a big proposal, it's a lot of money, we don't take it lightly. So please ask questions. I'm happy to answer any questions. The second proposal is for a grant program for the business community for profit and nonprofit partners. And the way we envision that is, it may be a conduit for getting some funds back to, for example, our fire and rescue, who have not been able to have their fundraisers, they're in dire need of funds. And under the CARES Act, the way I read it, and Mr. Curry can correct me, but the way I read it, is that those funds can't be handed directly to those people. However, through a grant program, we can make that happen. And so we would envision $100,000, we'll take more if you have it, that we can set up a program. We don't have to reinvent the wheel. Many other communities have done this for their profit and nonprofit partners. So we don't have to reinvent the wheel. We can get those funds out. The last thing we, as businesses in Rappahannock, want to see is that money that has been gifted to us and this great opportunity we've been given, is to have to return that money. We need to put that money into our economy. That's what's most important. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Anyone else wishing to speak? All right. And with that, I would declare the public comment period closed. The next item of business on the agenda is the reassessment agreement with Wingate and Associates. Mr. Curry, if you would, key that up for us, please.
Yes, as board members recall, this was on your July 6th agenda, and every six years, the county Rappahannock reassesses real property. That is the maximum duration of time that a locality, a small locality, can go between reassessments. So we must go through a reassessment process. It's a code-driven process, and the intent is to share the burden on your property owners fairly. So it's most important that each property is valued relative to each other, so that you can spread the tax burden across those property owners in a fair way. That is a very professional process. Knowing that we only do it every six years, and we're very small, that work is contracted out. Wingate and Associates performed the last reassessment here in Rappahannock County, and they submitted a proposal and a regional RFP that Rappahannock participated in with Clark County, Page County, Shenandoah County, and Warren County. Those localities are working through their own process right now. I know Warren is using, used Wingate, and I believe Page is using Wingate right now. And so there were questions after your last meeting. We have today with us your Commissioner of Revenue, Mary Graham, and Representative Mr. Thomas from Wingate and Associates, who can answer any questions you have. I did hand out at your spot a letter and the rate sheet from the RFP that hopefully will help you understand how the pricing works. It's on a per parcel basis, and you can see from that sheet that the pricing is, for a county with 20,000 parcels, is a little bit different than a county with 6,000 parcels like us. So with that, I'll ask Ms. Graham if she has anything she wants to add before we make the contractor, Ms. Graham and I, available for any questions you may have.
Hi, I'm Mary Graham. I live in Jackson District, and I'm Commissioner of the Revenue. I just want to add to-
You lift the mic up.
Oh, sorry.
Just squeeze the handle right below there.
Is that better? Is that better?
Thank you so much.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, that's great. Thank you.
Anyways, to add to what Gary said, I just have a couple, couple personal things. I spoke with Becky Smith and Paige, who's undergoing, at the time I talked to her, they were in the middle of their reassessment, and, you know, using Wingate and Associates. And they were very impressed. Everything was ahead of schedule, very professionally done. They basically were asking for the same level of service that we would be asking for, and she had every confidence in their work and was very pleased with the outcome. The second thing is, over the last year and a half since I've been in this job, I've had occasion, several occasions, to call Mr. Thomas and other people in the company to ask about assessment situations, so that I could understand how to do assessments correctly. Because the commissioner, it falls to the commissioner between cycles to do new construction and divisions and that sort of thing. And they have always been very helpful and very responsive when I've needed help. So those are two personal things that wouldn't come up from anybody else. And we can proceed.
So unless Mr. Thomas has anything he wants to share directly, it may be appropriate for questions.
Mr. Thomas, did you have anything that you wanted to say to the board up front?
Yeah.
Yes, please do. That would be wonderful. Thank you.
Well, thank you, thank you, board members, for, again, considering our company to do your next reassessment. There's a little bit of difference between this reassessment and the last in the level of service that our proposal has included. And we would more or less look at this proposal as a turnkey product, whereby we would do the, all the clerical functions and all the notice preparation, all the postage, all those types of items that were borne by the county during the last reassessment and the one prior, because we have, this would be our third attempt or our third opportunity. Those costs were borne by the county, and in this instance, we're proposing that we do more of a turnkey product. And that's something that we, depending on the desires of the client, that's something that we flex with and can, you know, can work out. But that's what, that's one of the reasons why there is a difference in price from six years ago and today, is that we're not really comparing same level of service. We would be delighted, I would be delighted, to answer any questions. If you have any concerns or anything of that nature that we can add and address, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I know some of the board members did have questions when we got into this discussion the other Monday. Okay, Mr. Parrish.
So thank you for coming out tonight. By the way, have you all done this twice before, not just once before?
This, yes, sir.
This will be the third time for you guys, right?
This will be the third time, that's correct.
Right. And you answered my main question before the meeting, and that is that I mistakenly thought that manufactured homes were actually all homes. This is just the mobile homes that we're talking about.
Right, right.
And so you're, so a little, I'm a little confused, though. You got $30.50 per parcel, which includes improvements on this contract, but on this sheet of paper here, it's $34.35.
Well, the, there were negotiations between Mr. Curry, Ms. Graham, and myself during, along the way, and we conceded a couple items along in that price structure. So if you do the math, if you run that spreadsheet right on down, it won't come up to $30.50. There were some concessions that we made along the way.
Primarily the office space. We will provide the office space to them to use in Mary's office, so they don't need to charge us for office space.
So we don't, this $3.05 does not pertain-
Correct. And the Board of Assessors, which was traditionally part of the reassessment process here in Rappahannock County, that's been more or less changed to the option of a professional assessor. Now, we have Skip Willett, who is very familiar with your county, worked here twice before, Certified General State of Virginia, Certified General Real Estate Appraiser, would be our, would be our professional assessor for your county.
This coming year, okay?
Yes, sir.
And then, Mary, do you know exactly how many parcels we have in the county?
It's been covering right around 6,000.
Okay.
That's how it was at the end of the year, but-
Right.
I was seeing a high of 17,000.
Right, okay.
The sheet that's before you shows 6,001 at the top, and that's close.
That's back in 17, so it really covers right around 6,000.
Right, okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you, it clears up a lot.
If I remember correctly, Mr. Parrish, the other question that you had at our last meeting was regarding the digital photograph charge?
Right, I talked to them about, before the meeting, and that seems to be an issue that would be beneficial to the Commissioner of Revenue when they're comparing something like being, if they're overseeing, correct me if I'm wrong, but if you're doing the oversight of B&amp;Bs or tourist homes, and they got a picture on the website, and you want to make sure this is the same one that they're talking about, in which case, but it's not, is there any way, are you going to know when you get to a house if it's actually a tourist home or not? You wouldn't have any way of knowing that?
Really wouldn't, no, not unless we had some sort of predetermined list.
Right.
But we'd like to address the nature of our photography criteria. We're very adamant that the photographs take a good perspective image of the subject with one wall on the side and one wall on the front. That's if you take one photograph of the subject of the main property. No distance photography, like from the, you know, 200 yards away, no human subjects. We try to, we try to get the best image for the county that we can, because, and they will be date stamped, because that way you have, you know, you have a tie into the visit, you have a tie into the image.
Yep. So are you suggesting, Mary, that they would have a photograph of every house?
I honestly think that's a group decision.
Can you go to the mic so we make sure? Thank you.
I think that's a group decision. I think when it came up before, the building office has some interest in having more recent photos. They have some from, I think it's 2002, and lots happened since then. And I believe they use them also. Again, it seems like the kind of thing that should be-
They can be valuable from a quality of construction perspective, is backchecking things. And then, while it's not a full 360, in some instances, it can be helpful when we do this in six more years, and then you see a big change, you can compare those old photos to new photos or the new situation. Or if we have discussions of whether permits have been pulled, and, you know, there's a porch on the front of the house, but there wasn't before, those sort of things can be helpful. It's not required, it's an added service. And the benefit is that they're tied to the parcel in the system, rather than just floating around on some drive somewhere.
Yeah, we have had a couple situations where people discovered things on the MLS that do not match what we have, and it'd be nice if I could work into my deputy's routine to periodically go through those listings and compare them to our pictures and say, oh, they've done some work that we didn't have any clue about. Things like that. So it's more for an investigative purpose for my office anyways.
Got it. So these pictures would only be for residences if we had them? Because, I mean, you all also measure the barns in the outbuildings.
That's right. In some, with some clients, we have taken pictures to a certain value threshold.
Right.
If you say, we want to see everything with a $10,000 value above, then we would do something like that. Now, the picture manager software that your county has will allow us to archive those pictures, too. So you can have the most current picture in front, and you'll have versions of the property as far back as your history will go. Yeah.
So I just, while I got you, and you're getting ready to do this, I want to point out that the barns in these outbuildings are part of the scenery in the county, and a lot of them are functionally obsolete. So if you go and measure them and put down their replacement value minus depreciation, it's going to be really a bigger value than it's worth to the actual landowner. And, you know, I've known cases where they actually burn it down or tear it down to not pay taxes on it, and were taken away from our landscape by doing that. So I would just ask while you're doing this to keep in mind that most of these barns are functionally obsolete. They're just there because, and they're not using them anymore, they're just there.
It's one of the difficult appraisal problems for rural properties, is trying to figure out contributing value of those types of structures. I agree with you. I agree with you 100%.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm just asking you to go easy on the barns in the county. Not just because I got a lot of them, it's just, you know, makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Did any other board members, Mr. Whitson?
Sure. Hi, thanks for coming out. My name's Kier Whitson. I represent the Hampton District, which includes the center part of the county and town of Washington. Just a few questions. I'm a newbie on the board, so this is my first time through this. But hopefully, any education I get now will help in the future, and I can move more quickly through this. We have on this, on this price comparison worksheet, Rappahannock, Page, Warren, Clark, Shenandoah. Just very quickly, why are we on the high end of those counties listed? It looks like we're even with Clark County. What factors are contributing to that?
If you, if you think about an appraisal project, like a mass appraisal project like this reassessment that we're getting ready to do, you're looking at roughly 6,000 parcels. So the startup, the market analysis, the calibration is all the same, whether I'm doing 6,000 or I'm doing 20,000.
An economies of scale issue.
That's right, it's an economies of scale.
And then, just in terms of your pricing approach, why, recognizing that Rappahannock County doesn't have a lot of development, very little changes, and we have 6,000 parcels, why would you not come in with a fixed fee proposal? Why are we still working off of a per parcel fee-based proposal?
I think that's more customary.
Okay.
If we wanted to reduce it to a fixed fee, I'm sorry, fixed fee, we could certainly do that. In some localities that we work, we have not necessarily an explosion of parcels, but over the time when the contract's negotiated and the time the project's actually finished, we may have a couple hundred parcels different from, you know, and so we don't necessarily lock in at a fixed number. We've got to do maybe 200 more parcels by the end of the project.
Yeah, it won't happen here, I promise you that.
I feel like you're probably right.
You know, maybe in 50 years. Yeah, I think one thing I'd like to see maybe next time would be maybe a fixed fee proposal, recognizing that our, that our county's pretty static from a development perspective, just as an idea.
I think we probably asked for the per parcel pricing in the RFP because it was a regional, multi-county effort.
I see, I understand. And then, real quickly, just in terms of your competition in this part of Virginia, what differentiates you compared to other appraisal companies? I mean, you've given some of the attributes, you're offering a turnkey approach to doing business. Anything else that jumps out that, obviously, you know our county, so that's very important to me?
Well, I think, I think our business principles are firmly entrenched in our company. We've been in business for over 50 years as a real estate, private real estate appraisal firm. I've been around for 31 years with the company. And we're going to make sure that, you know, there's an old saying, that your restaurant's no better than its last meal. We can't afford a bad job. We can afford, we cannot afford the reputation that will follow us, and if you, if you turn a bad product out to accounting. We're very conscious that the ratio of assessments to sale price is a very important part, it's not only important from a market value standpoint, but it's important when you try to evaluate the contribution of properties that aren't luckily assessed. So there's a lot of things that go into having a proper ratio of assessment to sale. We pride ourselves on turning a high ratio of assessment to sale, and that's a median expression, if you will. But those types of things, we're never going to put somebody that's incompetent on a property. Now, you know, we have an average tenure of 17 years with our, with our staff. And, you know, we, we're not putting someone there that, and particularly in a Rappahannock County property, where you might have a wide variance of properties. You know, if you get into maybe a Loudoun County, or Stafford County, or Spotsylvania, you've got a lot of cookie cutter subdivisions, you've got, you've got the opportunity to use lower-priced labor, if you will, to do the data collection. That's not, that's not so practical in a county like Rappahannock, where you've got a wide variety of properties and, you know, wide variety of qualities, too.
How large will your core team be for this project?
We'll probably have anywhere from two to three people. And, you know, it'll take us the majority of the year to do.
Okay.
And no reason to load it up with a bunch of people, because, you know, you lose, you lose the ability to communicate and to communicate effectively with value sets if you get a large staff in, you pour it in, and you try to knock it out in three months or something like that. Not practical.
Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you answering all those questions.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Does any other board member wish to ask any questions or have any comments?
I have one question, if you don't mind, that may be for Mr. Curry. If this is approved, when does it begin?
What I'll be asking of you tonight is to authorize me to sign this agreement, and as soon as that happens, we'll tell them to go.
When do you think you might go, Mr. Thomas?
We would, we would be prepared to move into the project in September.
Very good. Anything further, Ms. Donahue?
That's it, thank you.
Mr. Fraser?
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Thomas, we do appreciate it very much.
Thanks a lot.
Any further discussion or questions in regards to the reassessment agreement attached to the agenda this evening? If there's no additional discussion, do I have a, do I have a motion in regards to this agreement?
The one thing I would want to be clear is relative to the optional service that is listed right now in the agreement for the photographs per photograph, which is essentially per parcel, maybe a few per parcel, depending on how we ultimately break it down. But I would want any motion to be clear as to whether the board would like to pursue that and include it or not, or if there's a certain, only on residents or only on business
That's a tough question, because we, as, this board really doesn't, you know, work closely like Mary does with the situation. It couldn't be a situation where we leave it up to the Commissioner of Revenue.
So I just want, I'm going to execute the agreement. I would tell you that if it's one, if it's one per parcel, it's $18,000.
Right.
Correct.
So every six years.
Right, okay.
I think that's a good idea, to set that, you know.
This way, we can prove that they've actually visited the actual-
Yes, that's true.
And Mary, I mean-
They just didn't drive by. Oh, yeah, there it is.
And Mary, it sounds like, I mean, you and I have talked previously about enforcement, and it sounds like that's precisely what this tool would provide you, is without adding additional staff, it would give you a mechanism to confirm that you're talking about dwellings that actually exist and are configured in a way that you believe they exist. Is that correct?
I feel like it helps.
Okay.
But again, I'd make the decision just by myself.
Well, there is one-
I'm willing to make the decision by myself, if you would.
There is one concern that I may have with this, and that is the issue of privacy. And is, would these pictures be available to the public? And if we ever did go to GIS or whatever it is, would that not, it wouldn't be available to somebody sitting in Saudi Arabia?
That is optional, and other localities do make them available.
Right.
I believe they would be public records, so somebody could request them and pay for them from Freedom of Information Act.
Because what I'm thinking at with the world, the way it's going, is if we end up, which I usually know I'm opposed to GIS, but if we end up with that, and this is part of it, and people from- is part of it, and people from far away can actually look at somebody's house, kind of determine what they're worth, and, and kind of go after them over the internet.
You know, those sorts of things are risks out on the internet already. If we went to a GIS system, I spoke with one vendor that, I guess you had him call me, where if we had something online, you can scrub it down to whatever level you want. It could just be parcel number and acreage. You wouldn't even have to have ownership information there. And there are counties that, that's how they do it. I mean, it's just the most basic information. Now, Gary's point, if we have photographs that are part of our real estate record, well, real estate is public, just like anybody can ask for anybody's card, assessment card, right now.
Right.
And they do. Now, I don't see these photos being printed on those cards, so they'd have to ask special, you know, do you have any pictures of this? But...
Because we are still one of the few counties left in the nation that people cannot just sit in their living room and look up what exactly we have and, and all of that, and it'd be nice to keep it that way.
It's getting to the point where somebody just pulls up Google Maps or Google Earth, and they can zoom in and look at an ortho of the property and have a really good idea of what's happening there without any of our control.
I use a hunting app that shows me all the parcels and the names, you know, in the county, because I don't have a tool myself, so I subscribe to a hunting tool.
Right. So I don't know if this is something we're going to vote on tonight or our regular, next regular meeting.
I would ask that you do it tonight, but the timing is such.
And we have to, I'm okay with the contract, but I'm not, I'm not sure about taking pictures of every house, but...
When in the process would you need to have that go-no-go decision on the photos?
If, Gary, we'll have, uh, excuse me.
We'll have a certain amount of research time in, at the beginning of September that we'll devote to market studies. And I would think if we knew by, you know, sometime around mid-September as to what the criteria would be for photography, that would be, that would be fine with us, yeah.
So I'm not sure what would change between now and then, but if there are additional questions, you need staff to research or analyze to make that decision, we, you know, we'd be happy to dig into those.
So, one more question about the pictures. When you all do an appraisal, you do the measurements, you do the cost per square foot, depending on what the structure is, then you do depreciation, subtract depreciation, and then you have another element. What, what is that called? Where you, if it's a really nice, nicely landscaped, you, you have a word for?
Inflator.
Well, sure, certainly, there's a, there's a way that we grade properties, and I'm speaking residentially right now. Residential properties are all graded according to quality and.
Right.
And design and materials used and that sort of thing. And so that, that's part of the way that we differentiate lower-cost properties from higher-cost properties.
Right.
Yeah. The depreciation that you, that you, that you described can be.
So you got depreciation, and then you got, what is the word for the other?
You have obsolescence due to function, you have obsolescence due to location or economic obsolescence, so those types of things. And then we can also reflect a neighborhood if we determine that the property lies within an area of influence that's kind of, that's not typical.
And do you all handle that on a percentage basis, or do you handle that on, like, do you have one through five, or?
No, it's usually a percentage basis.
Percentage basis, okay.
But it has to be provable in the market.
Okay, the only reason I bring it up vis-à-vis the photograph is that, you know, if there's, like, are the Board of Equalization, when somebody comes in and say, hey, my property's not worth this, you know, you all have it, you know, ramped up over, over the cost per square foot because of the grade, and the, the Board of Equalization could have a picture there to take a look at, it would help them.
It, it will, and that's, and that's quite often the way they're used.
Right, right.
You know, if you've got, if you've got something that, particularly if a property owner wants to make a comparison between his property and, and another, you have, you have a couple pictures there that you can make a comparison with rather than make a site visit.
Yeah.
For the Board of Equalization, that is.
Right. In other words, his neighbor's got the exact same house, but of course, his view's better, his landscape's better, his fences are better, all this stuff, yeah. All right, well, I'll make a motion. We go ahead and give Mr. Curry the authority to sign this agreement, and we can talk about the photographs later before you get started.
So we have a motion on the table to approve the agreement as presented tonight, but excluding the additional, additional photography?
Including the photograph cost, including the photograph cost, just, it'll be up to the Commissioner of Revenue and Mr. Curry, if they think it's worthwhile to use the photographs, or to what extent to use the photographs.
So the motion is to approve the agreement as presented, and for staff to work out with the Commissioner of Revenue, the criteria for the photographs that will be included. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll go ahead and second. This is Kier Whitson.
Thank you, Mr. Whitson. All in, do we need a roll call vote for this, Gary? I'm not used to being able to say all. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Thomas. I hope you have a, a good trip over to, are you heading to Madison County?
Well, I'm heading to the county.
Oh. Have a safe trip over the mountain, watch out for deer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That takes us to the second item on the agenda. Thank you very.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, thank you very much, Mary.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary.
That takes us to the second item on the agenda, the CARES Act CRF distribution discussion. Mr. Curry, if you could set this up for us, please.
Yes, the board had a previous discussion about this at the July 6 meeting, and since that time, I've modified the table that you reviewed in your last meeting and added a few things and added some details. I also printed a copy in a decent size for you. It is on board docs, and I'm prepared to work through this. You heard from a few citizens earlier who represent the Sperryville Community Alliance and business of Rappahannock. Their requests are incorporated into this table. Dr. Grimsley is here. We've had pretty detailed conversations about the school district's interest in funds and need for funds because of their altered operations. And then, just backing up a little bit, the board did take action earlier this year and made an appropriation to the schools in the amount of $150,000. And the board also made an appropriation on the county side for FY '20 of $200,000, but we really only used, you know, 20,000 or something on that order. The rest of the funds that have not been appropriated so far will need to be appropriated into FY 2021 to be spent. And in further than appropriating them, the board can define how those funds should be spent. It's been my recommendation that you provide, allocate as many funds as you can to the schools to resolve their needs, particularly for the expenses that have already occurred in FY '20 and possibly occurred so far this year. And then the schools have some larger capital projects that I'm sure Dr. Grimsley can talk to you about, the auditorium seating that would provide a lecture-type seating where children from classes can go in and be physically distanced and all receive instruction. The, it does, the Google devices that would be available on a one-to, reaching their one-to-one goal for their students to receive that electronic education, which is critical with their plan, I presume, going A-B sort of scenario, where the children will have the uniform devices and be able to really learn how to use those devices on their days, learning at home, not their days off, but their days learning at home. And then there's additional PPE and sanitizing equipment that the schools have requested. And lastly, some online educational resources that I think with the devices, they can leverage those devices greater if they have a better ability to do online teaching for math and, I believe it's English, or writing. So those are obvious options for the board for CARES Act. And unfortunately, they compete with many, many other options. And this entire table adds up to close to a million dollars of ask, if you will, and that still leaves a blank for telephony upgrade, because I don't have numbers for that yet. So that's, you know, significantly more ask than you have cash on hand that has already been received from the state via the federal government. So there are decisions to be made. I've set the table up in Excel, and I could pull it up, where we can keep track of the expenses for different rows that the board may want to fund and see how they add together as we approach that dollar value. I will say that the expenses from FY '20 that the school has spent, the county has spent, those dollars are out the door, and we've closed the books on, on the fiscal year. And so for those, part of this CARES Act effort is an accounting process. We must, at the end of this entire process, on December 30th, be able to show where we are accounting for eligible expenses for the entirety of the $643,000. And if those dollars are already out the door and we can account for them, then that, that gets you a little bit ahead on that process. It's not, the cash is already in our bank, and so if we could account for $643,000 of eligible expenses right this second, with dollars already spent, you already closed your books for FY '20, you closed your books in a positive, with revenues in excess of expenses without the CARES Act dollars, that leaves you in a very good position to be able to fund other projects with fund balance, if you thought that you needed additional dollars for projects on this sheet or other projects that are in your capital, capital stack that maybe we'll talk about in the next agenda. Take your suggestions on how you want to work through this.
Well, you've, yeah.
Yes, please go ahead, Mr. Parrish.
Well, you've put this chart together, and you've worked closely with the individuals' request in the funds, and you have a good idea of how to prioritize the needs and the flow of excess in the county, and I think we might be wise for us to see what your suggestions are and go from there.
Well, on a base level, I would say that funding the expenses that are already out the door would be highest on my priority list. And so those are all the expenses, the additional $88,483 and some pennies, I think it is, that have been spent and deemed to be eligible by the schools in FY '20. Those are, I think, the easiest to add into the list of additional. And on this table, there are, under the BO, BOs priority, you can see I just started entering some numbers of priority one, or those are things that have already essentially been approved or done. And I started with some priority two items, and one of those is the $88,000 of school expenses.
Right.
That's already spent and eligible.
So maybe rather than approach it to where we decide who, you know, instead of working from the top down, work from the bottom up and, and decide who doesn't get what they're asking for.
Certainly do that.
And then, and, and then maybe in some instances, you know, rather than get the whole amount they're asking for, they get part of what they're asking for, and that way we can get to the $643,000 that we're shooting for.
The other thing I would say is that you don't have to be precise in dialing in $643,000.004 exactly. If there's some overage, then you know you have a pretty good position in your fund balance that could pick up some, you know, a little bit of overage. And if you're under, that just means as we work through the fiscal year, we'll be having to pay attention to these actual expenditures. And these, a lot of these are estimates on what an expenditure is going to be, and so we'll have to pay attention to what that actual expenditure is. And we may come to you in the middle of this period before December 30 saying, there's an opportunity, or you have a need to allocate an additional $20,000 or something like that. And we may go through a similar exercise to see, well, what can we get done in the amount of time we have left, so we're not turning funds back to the state.
So, if we're...
Before we get too far down the road, I, I did request for Dr. Grimsley to be here this evening. Did you have any comments prepared, Shannon?
Sorry.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
You're welcome. I, I don't really have comments prepared in particular, but I'm here to answer any questions you may have. As you know, we are reopening schools on a plan that we tried very, very hard to keep within our allocated and appropriated budget along with the school-allocated CARES Act funding. However, there are some of those things that are over and above what we could do, like what we've requested here, the devices and PP and things are things, things we have to do. We're going to do them anyway, it's going to come from somewhere, and it's most likely if we don't get approval tonight from you, it's going to kick some other projects down the road a little further for, for technology and other things, and facilities maintenance and things. So we appreciate your consideration very much, and as I just reiterate, with Mr. Curry said, that our FY '20 dollars are already spent, our books are closed, so whatever you count there essentially just, you know, rolls back to the county because we're done. So, your FY '20, so, we appreciate it. Do you have any questions for me that I can answer about these?
I did have a quick question. I wanted to make sure, I know that there were some items that weren't accounted for on the last chart that we received.
Yes.
On our normal Monday meeting, and I just wanted to make sure that all of your asks were accounted for in our document this evening.
Yes, and I apologize for that. I got very excited when I pulled the COVID report.
I could see how it had happened very easily.
My CFO was on vacation, so when we got down to the grandeur level, just because in our accounting system it says COVID, does not mean it's also CARES-eligible, and even further, may not be CARES-eligible for county funds. So now that we've gotten through all that, she's back, and we pulled every single invoice, it is all accurate.
Okay, very good. Thank you so much. And then I did want to follow up, too. I think, I may have seen it in the media, I'm not sure if you mentioned it at our meeting, but you will have money coming back to the county this year, is that correct?
We, yes, we, we definitely will.
And the approximate amount on that is about $400,000?
Should, with the $150,000 and should our $88,000, it'll be around that, yes.
Okay.
We still have some federal dollars and reimbursements we have to account for and be sure that those come in, but yes.
Okay, thank you very much, Dr. Grimsley. Does anybody else have questions for Dr. Grimsley?
Yeah, I was going to ask a related question. So we talked, when you were here last time, we talked about the increased expenses related to the whole pandemic, but obviously you have reduced overhead costs. Could you describe some of those overhead cost reductions that have resulted in the, in the budget surplus that Ms. Smith just alluded to?
Certainly, things like fuel and running the buses. We did a lot with our energy efficiency to make sure we were trying to optimal, optimize all of those savings, so things like that. We still continue to pay staff, and our feeding program was, was just wonderful. However, we did see quite a loss in revenue because of the, the feeding program not bringing in the, the dollars that we usually would see, just the federal reimbursement from the USDA grant waiver. So things like that.
Okay.
I mentioned you had substitute savings.
Substitute teachers, right, because we didn't have those uses, so.
And can we unpackage what you just said about the budget surplus and explain just quickly the role of this $150,000 that I heard quickly in passing?
Sure. Would you like me to? So, right, so basically, the, the dollars are spent, so what we're going to turn back is whatever's left over, with the $150,000 that's already approved. If that additional $88,000, all it does really is add to the surplus to roll back, because we've closed our books, our expenses are done.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Yep. And then a question for, two questions for Mr. Curry. Number one, if we were to, if we were to prioritize our decisions here, would it be, would it make sense to just make a clean decision tonight for starters on fiscal year 20 expenditures, whether it's schools or otherwise? And, and if so, is it really just the schools we're talking about, because we don't know of any other actual documented expenditures, county or otherwise, that would fall into fiscal year 20, spending goods, services received?
The...
Yeah. And then the second question I have is, the, the front-end discussion about CARES Act funds is if, it cannot be direct revenue replacement. I know you monitor legislative activity regularly. Has there been any, any sign of hope in this regard? Might we see additional funds beyond the $643,000? And if so, would those funds possibly be less restricted than this, than this first tran? this first tranche?
So I'll answer the second question first. Possible, of course. It's a definite possibility. Unfortunately, there's no way to know. There's been a lot of chatter at the federal level of additional support for state and local governments. And in those discussions, they have centered around revenue replacement. But this is a long way from either party talking about their goals to having them come together, passing something through the House and the Senate and getting signed. So I would hold judgment on anything further coming our way. That said, the fact that much of the nation has seen kind of a resurgence of cases probably would lead one to believe there's, it's more likely that additional federal funding will come through than if that didn't happen. So I wouldn't even say I'm cautiously optimistic. I would, if some additional revenue comes, we will welcome it with open arms. But we should plan to go forward without anything else coming from the federal government.
And then the first question was just on fiscal year 20, 20 expenditures for goods, services.
Right. So the board already appropriated a large sum of money into FY20, and so that becomes an accounting process. Any expenditures that happened in FY20 on the county side that are eligible can be recognized in basically taking off the top of that appropriation. It's not very much. There's a little bit of overtime, and those are listed in here. And the different PPE and the Plexiglas that we bought and things like that. But our expenses are relatively low, very low compared to the schools, given the size of our physical plant and relative proportions and staff count. And, you know, we didn't have to deliver our services electronically and all the things that the schools had to do. But we are going through all our expenses and looking for any potential expenditure that would be eligible.
Would it make sense just for prioritization, Mr. Parrish suggested, you know, working from the bottom up? I was just wondering, just because it's all about timing, and when you spend money against actual expenses and goods and services received, would it make sense if we tackled fiscal year 2020 for starters and pushed out those funds
Yeah, yes.
From a prioritization standpoint?
Yes, but I would hope that you'll get further than that tonight.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, so some of these projects are going to be time sensitive. And for a particular, you know, the schools, if they're going to move on a project to redo the auditorium seating, they've got to go now. If they have any thought that they'll get it in place before kids come, which I think is impossible.
No.
But at least they get it in place as soon as possible to accommodate children. You know, the marketing request from businesses of Rappahannock, if that's a goal of the board to do a project like that, you need to engage the people to develop the marketing program and be able to get it and make the ad buys, or however it works, to get it ready to go for the fall season. If you miss the fall season, then it's probably not worth it. Because, you know, that's the critical thing for our businesses, is to make sure that fall season that they all rely so much on is a good one. And if we can help that, then that's great. So it's, and some other ones may not have that time sensitivity, and it could wait. But it may be a case by case scenario. And, you know, the Wi-Fi is variable, that could probably be done anytime. You know, if you wanted to dig into the details further, you could do that. You know, if you wanted to link in with the opportunities and options for kids in school and things like that, you know, they could come onboard anytime you want. It's not a deadline. It'd be a missed opportunity for people to be able to use Internet in that area. But it's not like you would miss the deadline, right?
Do you have any other questions for me?
Yeah, I mean, just going back on Ms. Smith's question on budget surplus, what is the number? Is it, is I'm thinking of it as a benchmark for
That's not going to be known until the audit's done.
Can we say anything more precise than around 400? No?
No.
No? Okay.
Sorry.
Between 300 and 400? Can't even say that. Okay.
And we did have an addition to our own fund balance this past year as well, if I remember correctly, about $300,000. So, I mean, we do have some money that we potentially could spend that wouldn't be related to CARES Act funding. But that may be a follow-up discussion.
You know, state code would suggest that every year, we're going to add to our fund balance, because we don't overspend our revenue. Or if we do, we're decidingly pulling from fund balance for certain things. But here recently, every year, you are adding to your fund balance.
Thank you, Dr. Grimsley.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Any further discussion?
Sorry about that. Thank you for your
Oh, no, that's very good. Thank you. I mean, I agree with Mr. Parrish that I think we have to have a starting point. And, I mean, the purpose of the exercise, to me, is to make sure that everything we include in our CARES Act funding is items that are eligible for reimbursement as we understand them at this time. And as I look through the listing for the funding confidence, the second column from the left, Mr. Curry's rated, based on the numerous discussions that he's sat in on between counties, his confidence that we can get reimbursed if we do spend these particular monies. So, I mean, my suggestion, right off the bat, would be anything that isn't a high level of confidence for funding, I would think that'd be something that we should consider eliminating. And I believe none of those monies have already been spent. And, I mean, then we would have a, you know, basis for discretionary spending if we were so inclined to do so at a later time. And I think if we sort that column and subtract those numbers out, I think that'll take off about $165,000 of our excess. It gets us halfway there. But, I mean, I'm open to suggestions about other ways to approach this.
Okay, well, let's, just to pick something to start with, why don't we talk about the restroom at the county park?
You want to strike that, Mr. Parrish?
It would be a nice thing to have. I'm not saying strike it. I just want to know what everybody else thinks. I mean, it's, eventually, we're going to need one there. And is this an opportunity for us to get it through these other funds? Is this something that they're not going to balk at when we ask for the money for the restroom at the county?
Yeah, so it's subjective. I thought that that was less secure than something that's very, you know, if you went and bought hand sanitizer, guaranteed.
Right.
So the touchless environment, you'd have to have it structured the right way. And many schools, and I think here, they're using touchless hand dryers. And schools and county offices are using touchless restroom upgrades. And that's critical, you know, high-touch surfaces. You touch the door handle, you touch the sink, you touch the soap dispensers, touch the toilet flushing. So if you can remove those high-touch services, that's of great value. Now, at the park, the project is bigger than just replacing appliances.
Right.
Would it include winterizing? Because all of them are so much more fragile.
It basically adds a new third bathroom that's winterized and touch-free. So that's why I kind of knocked it down a little bit to medium.
I mean, Culpeper County just has their regular restrooms open at all their park facilities.
Yeah, I mean, you just have to have heat so the water don't freeze. We just don't have that feature. But they would in this new bathroom.
Okay, well, we can wait on that and just think about that and then go just
Is that included, though, the $60,000 in your priority funds? Or that's in the excess funds?
I don't think I understand the question.
You've got priority one, two, and four.
Yeah, I put a four there. I was just kind of
Is the $60,000 included in your priority funded number down here?
Yes.
Okay.
What is the scale for the priorities? I wasn't clear on that.
It's just a starting point for the board to change the numbers to whatever you want.
And the scale goes one, two?
A million, whatever you want. Just, any mark in that column will add the total to the bottom.
Okay.
I thought it might be useful if the board needed to sort through different things.
I have no problem with Ms. Smith's approach. I mean, Mr. Curry studied the funding and audit parameters for CARES Act funding. So I think we do need to prioritize. We should go with high funding confidence. And I also think we have definitive capital project needs at the school that I think we also need to focus on first, in my opinion, including already 2020 fiscal year expenditures. So I think we should maybe not dive into the weeds in the lower part of the worksheet, and maybe start on the school side. Those are big-ticket items.
Right. Well, I think we all agree, we need to support the school. I think what we have to decide is who are we going to cut out.
Right.
And I do think the HVA system, air purification for the volunteer fire and rescue buildings, I think that's an important project. But if there's only a medium level of confidence that we're going to be reimbursed for it, I would prefer to fund it another way.
Right.
So, I mean, I think that's important. I just don't think this is the right way to fund it.
Yeah, agreed.
Which line is that?
That's line under Fire Chief's, item number 12.
12, okay.
And that's close. If it's in a county or school building, I'd say it's high. And once we take that step to a nonprofit, it's a public health item, but in a nonprofit. And so that should be similar to other public health items in nonprofits.
The telephony support network for schools, that's item, or for the county buildings, number 18, I mean, I think, again, we all agree that that's an important thing, and we all would like to address it. And there's not an estimated cost attached to it.
No, I actually had a conversation with a company today. I think this project will drive savings regardless, you know, as we move forward.
Yep.
So if you can also pay capital costs with CARES, that'd be great. But it's one that we'll probably do anyway. So those are the great projects. If you're going to do them anyway, and you can get credit, then that's good. But I just don't have enough, I don't know enough about it yet to have any idea of what the capital cost or recurring cost is going to be.
I think we set that one aside and fund it another way. I mean, at $35,000 or whatever we're spending a year, we're going to save a lot of money quickly.
Unlike the refuse changes you recently made.
Exactly.
You know, if it can self-fund itself, then that's a project certainly to focus on some other way.
Be willing to strike that.
What about the next item is the cloud migration software? Is that something that we could fund another way? I mean, that's only $2,500.
Yeah, it's not very much. I was very surprised when I got the quote for that. I think that's something that is valuable for us from a disaster recovery perspective, as well as being able to work from anywhere. And that's the benefit from a CARES perspective. I did list that as a medium, but it would allow Debbie, Nick, and myself to pull up our financial system anywhere in the world.
Yeah, but maybe we should leave that.
But it's really small dollars, and we could just do that in the budget we have right now.
Right, we had to. So we got $200,000 allocated for the businesses of Rappahannock.
So there's the marketing, and then the small business grant program.
Right. I mean, that's, seemed like a lot of money. I was almost getting up there with the schools asking.
And it could be both or either or. And if you didn't do marketing to help your businesses, you might want to direct help your businesses who have had revenue interruption.
Well, if we cut that in half, for example, then they could decide if they're going to do $50,000 on each project or divvy it up, however. Would that not work?
I would have to leave that to Ms. Wood.
I mean, something's got to come off somewhere.
I think the question is, if there was a funding for marketing that is less than the ask, what does that do to you?
Well, we'll certainly entertain that idea. I think what we have to look at is the investment in the business community. And while we're asking for $100,000, that's a ballpark figure. I think it's really going to come in somewhere in the $75,000 to $80,000 range. I mean, obviously, we're not taking money that we're not spending because it all has to be accounted for. I, you know, I hear what you're saying, and you have to cut somewhere. I ask you just to look at our business community. I mean, look at your neighbors that own businesses, their residents here. And I don't want to get on my soapbox about this, but without these businesses, nonprofits don't make it. I mean, they just don't make it. A lot of businesses right now in our community are in dire straits. They've opened their doors, they're operating at 50% capacity. You can do the math on that. That's 50% revenue. We have businesses that have undertaken 30-year loans, who had a 10-year business plan for getting out of debt. They're people who are important cornerstones in this community. And for us, the Board of Supervisors and businesses of Rappahannock, to say that it's okay not to fund these people and not to support them, I mean, I know the schools need money, our children need money, but those are the same people who are sending children to school. I mean, we'll take less, but I got to ask you, you got to really stop and think about who you're cutting money out of. It's, these people, they're the backbone of our community, and they are hurt. They are really hurt. They've been shut down for months. And when you're operating at 50% capacity, some people are operating at 50% capacity, but they're sustaining a 75% loss in revenues. That's not good. They're not going to make it. They're going to, when they close their doors, their landlords are going to lose. I mean, it's a cascading effect. And if you take a look at that packet that I sent to you guys, you know, the state of Virginia for the tourism community, if you look at the numbers of what Rappahannock contributes to, in dollars, our tourism dollars, people's coming here to spend money, this is not a small thing. This isn't like it's something to sneeze at, to say like, oh, well, they don't really need all that money. They're in dire straits. And I don't know how else to say that unless we really look at our neighbors and say, what are we going to do without three blacksmiths? What are we going to do? I mean, if you think the Inn at Little Washington isn't hurting, you're mistaken. They're hurting, too. And I can't with a clear conscience say to you, sure, just cut our budget in half because we don't really need to help our businesses. We can do a halfway job helping them. It doesn't reflect good on me as a president of a business organization. This money is not for businesses of Rappahannock. We are only the conduit for getting it to our community. And I mean, everybody in the community, from fire and rescue, you're cutting it out of your fire and rescue, too, by cutting this sort of funding, this grant program. So you have to look at those people. I don't want to do it, so I'm going to stand fast and say, we want the $100,000. We want the $100,000 for a grant program. If you decide to cut it, then that's your, that's your decision. But those are your constituents. So for my businesses, I'm going to stand fast and say we want the money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
How will the, what is the mechanism for dispensing the grant money under the $100,000 proposal?
Sure. So we are open to options. We did a $100,000 grant program already. We distributed that in Rappahannock County. That was privately funded, as well as some grant money from businesses of Rappahannock. We selected a board of, a panel rather, of five people, and those five people made decisions. I don't think that that same plan would work for this. I think we have to look outside our business community, because there's that perception of favoritism. So I think we have to look out to maybe, you know, a regional economic development group to head that up. We're happy to administer it. And remember, we are all volunteer organizations, so we're doing this just out of love for the community. So if we're going to distribute funds, $100,000, and this would be a different grant program than the $1,000 grant program, this is looking at larger grants. So I think we do have to have another panel, you know, that we can pick, and we can work with the county or with Mr. Curry's office, to determine who's best suited for that. But I think one of the regional groups in the area could help us with that.
When you say they're larger grants, maybe describe briefly how this would differ from the privately funded program, which, as I understood, was a flat amount paid to basically any applicant who qualified.
Yeah. So on the other program, good question, thank you, we had two qualifications. You had to have a business in Rappahannock, either a for-profit or a nonprofit business. And you had to have, you had to show that you sustained a loss as a result of and you had to have, you had to show that you sustained a loss as a result of COVID-19. And that loss could be conveyed to us in one sentence. We didn't ask to see any financials. That wasn't the goal of the program. The goal of the program is to take that $100,000, $110,000, and put it into the community. So basically, if you applied, you got it. That's how it worked if you met those two criteria. This program would be a little bit different because we have some folks who need a little bit more help, the smaller cottage industries. I mean, we had people apply that we didn't even know that they existed. So I think the smaller cottage industries are taken care of, and I do think our restaurants, it was an industry hard hit by this, still very hard hit by this. I think there are others that might apply that may need, you know, maybe, and we don't have it completely fleshed out, Kier, to be honest with you, but we're following some of the other municipalities' programs and looking at those. So it could be a program up to $5,000, let's say. And then by showing a little bit more detail about what your losses have been, then that's how you would qualify for a larger amount.
Then my last question, and this is a tough one. If you were to prioritize between this sort of direct relief for businesses and this indirect marketing-based approach for general promotion of our local economy, not to say you have to choose one or the other, but what strikes you as a more meaningful and near-term benefit to your business community, your constituents?
So first, I'd like to say I'm not choosing, but I will answer your question. I think they, and not to be weasely and sound like a politician, not that politicians are weasely at all, that was not my intention, but I'm not trying to get out of the answer. I think they're both important and equally important. And I'd have to really ask all of the businesses what they felt about that question. I know that the marketing dollars will have a long tail effect, which by that I mean it's going to, it's going to go into the future. We have to spend these dollars now, and we have to plan, you know, quickly. I mean, we're on a very short suspense here. But it'll have a long-term effect in that it will keep rolling. Businesses of Rappahannock has already committed $30,000 to a branding campaign for the county. That's $30,000 right out of our account. So we've committed that, and that's going to kick off in the spring. So one's going to keep living in one way, and then the other is going to keep our businesses afloat. You know, I don't know if we would even have people, if we'd even give the full $100,000. I don't know the answer to that, but when you start looking at $5,000 grants, that goes pretty quickly. I think one, I think they're just different. It's really hard for me to pick one over the other.
And on the marketing campaign, recognizing that we're going to have to do something pretty active as a restart effort, also recognizing that states are shutting down again.
Yes.
We're all hopeful that the fall season here will be good for us, but it's increasingly apparent that it might not be.
Yes.
I wonder if we, I'm just putting this out there for everyone's consideration, if on the marketing campaign, I understand you want to get started, but, you know, we went to some effort to limit access to the Shenandoah National Park at a time when we didn't want visitors. And I'm afraid we could be headed right back into a situation where actually we want to dis- incentivize people from visiting for public health reasons. And that's not to be a spoil sport, but I just worry about the fall with the way everything is going. And I wonder if we couldn't at least commit in principle to helping you in a more robust way at a later date, when it might be more effective to fund some kind of restart marketing campaign, given that we might get through the end of this year and still be stuck like we are now.
Sure, I hear you. And I'd like to address that, if you'll give me just one more minute. Yes, and you know I was one of the big supporters of closing the trailheads and limiting access to the park. And our businesses were quite frankly supporters of that as well. They were concerned for their own health, their employees, and what have you. So I support that, and I see that that is a potential. Here's the key to all of this, though. Every other municipality in the state of Virginia is proceeding with a, we're open for business, and not, it doesn't have to be called that, but it has to be a staking out and gaining, a holding ground with market share. And so if we don't move now, we're going to lose market share. It's going to impact our business going forward, whether it's in the fall or whether it's in the spring. So now is the time that we have to start this. We don't have to say, come out today, but we have to start the research. We have to start those wheels turning for who are we targeting? Who do we want to get out here? How do we hold on to the market share that we have, or how do we gain more market share? That's the key. It doesn't have to be come in October. We want people to come in October because if our businesses lose two seasons, spring and fall, I don't know what's going to happen. There's a great percentage of them that will never recover from that and may close. So I don't want to scare tactics, but that's just the reality of it. So the campaign goes more about keeping our name out there. We have the opportunity, we have funds that we've never had access to before to promote our businesses and to promote the county so that everyone in the community benefits from it. And so it doesn't not, I mean, I hear your concern, it does not have to be strictly come out in October and enjoy the leaves. It just has to keep our name, and it has to start the ball rolling so that we take it into the springtime too.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Wood?
Well, I got a comment. So when we, you know, when we give money, or transfer, funnel this money to the schools, I mean, we, it's an obvious benefit, it's guaranteed. Fire and rescue, same deal. The income from, you talk about the income to the county, the tourism is a few hundred thousand a year that we, the county receives from tourism. That's really not that important. My main concern is that this virus just got to Rappahannock County, and we go out and spend this money to invite tourists, and then, you know, this, we're in a pandemic still, and I think it's going to get worse before it gets better. And so it's quite possible that people are not going to venture out in the fall, no matter what kind of advertising we do. So I don't think that this is a sure enough thing to allocate the money toward, I'm sorry.
I understand what you're saying, Chris, and I, Mr. Parrish, and what I just want to reiterate is this is not money for October. This is money to invest now to stake out and hold our market share. If it happens that people can come in October, that's great because we're going to be staking out that market share. The message will be based on what is happening with the virus and where we are in the pandemic. We're not foolish enough to invite people out here in the middle of a pandemic. We love this county, we love our businesses, we love everybody who lives here. So the idea is we have to establish and hold on to market share. It's just, it's a marketing principle that carries across the entire community. And if we lose that momentum, and Fakir and Warren and Page County are telling people, you know, here we are, when the pandemic's over, come and visit us, we have this beautiful scenery, we have all these things to offer, and Rappahannock is silent, we're losing our market share. And so in the spring, we are going to have a lot of ground to make up, and we may not even be able to make it up. And actually, the numbers from the state of Virginia are very different than how the county counts our dollars from tourism. So it's something to consider. Their numbers are considerably higher, considerably higher. And also, you have to look, again, and we're going back to the cascading effect, if businesses start closing, landlords start losing their tenants, all sorts of things start to happen. So if we just leave our businesses out there hanging in the wind, we've missed a real opportunity, and it could have a lasting impact. And who's going to fill our schools?
You're a terrific advocate for your group.
Thank you. I feel it in my heart, and I mean it. It's painful out there right now, and I'm not sure that everybody fully appreciates that. Thank you for your time and consideration.
I just wanted to say, Ms. Wood, I don't think that you're foolish at all for, you know, bringing, you said it may sound foolish. I don't think it's foolish at all, but, I mean, I think you're in the same boat that we are, is that you're trying to anticipate something which can't be anticipated. And so when we're looking to spend money and we have immediate needs that can be anticipated, it may behoove us to spend the money in those ways first. And please just note that's the only way that this is coming.
Oh, I understand that, I really do, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Fraser.
If I could, I've got, you know, conflicting emotions here. I know Ms. Wood represents a group called Businesses of Rappahannock, but we represent those people too. I mean, they're our constituents, whether they're members of that group or they're not. And I've been contacted by a couple of small business people, and they don't, they don't feel that there's enough money to go around, so they would rather, they would rather us give it to the fire and rescue and the schools. That's, I've got a couple of emails from some of my constituents that are in Businesses of Rappahannock, and of course, they support the $100,000. But the majority of the calls and people that have talked to me out, you know, in Amosville, they, the other morning, I can hear the fire, you know, the fire siren go off. The other morning, it went off three times within 20 minutes. And that only means one of two things, or both of them together, either nobody came out on the first go-round, or they got back-to-back calls that they have to try and get out on. And I don't know if we're getting out on those calls, and we have to, we have to be concerned about that.
Well, I think, Mr. Fraser, that if I understand correctly, I mean, I agree with you that we need to get money to fire and rescue, but the research that Mr. Curry has done has shown that if we're going to give money to volunteer fire and rescue departments, that we need to do it through a vehicle similar to the Businesses of Rappahannock, or some way that puts them on equal footing with other nonprofits so that they can compete for the funds. So my suggestion to sort of solve that problem is if they have shortfalls that we do need to pay, pay them out of money that is not associated with the CARES Act funding. Because I agree with you 100%, that is absolutely a priority for me. I just don't know that CARES Act funding is the most efficient way to get it to them.
So if we leave, this is a general question, if we leave the $100,000 in the small business grant, and a fire department is considered to be a small business.
Correct.
Then they would be eligible for that money if they asked for it.
Right. Those grants, per the guidance, they're for business interruption, right? So it is revenue replacement for our businesses. The counties can't use it for revenue. So the fire and rescue companies who couldn't have a carnival or fireworks or whatever, that is revenue, you know, it's business interruption. So that is acceptable. As Chair Smith said, you have endless flexibility with dollar, county dollars that are not CARES Act. And some of the uniqueness of the process with the schools and the end of the fiscal year will add to your fund balance. And so you could allocate some of those dollars to any of your nonprofits, quite frankly, who you support already, right? And you could support them through just fund balance dollars.
So this is a pretty painful process, but in order to pull the Band-Aid off fast, I mean, we've talked about eliminating number 12, is that right?
That is correct. And again, not that I don't think that we should do it, I just don't think we should do it from this money. I think we should absolutely do it, but not from this money.
Right. And so for number 12, that's, that's.
So we got number 12.
12 would be an operational expense for your fire and rescue companies. If they do it, you're going to pay it through the fire levy. It's just, it's going to happen.
Correct. And it would be like $1,000 or $2,000 a company.
Right.
So they would get reimbursed regardless.
Right.
So then we got number 16, which is the restroom upgrade. And if we knock off number 24, which is the re-market item, we got, we're up to 175,000, And how much more do we need to?
Another 150,000, approximately.
Okay. So, I mean, if that's okay with the rest of the board, just for conversational purposes, are we okay with those three items for now?
Well, I'm fine with that. I do think that there probably is some room for a marketing campaign. I think $100,000, I mean, if there's a spring campaign that was a $30,000 campaign, I would think that certainly Businesses of Rappahannock could adjust their program and figure out maybe a way to approach it for less. I don't know that we need to be involved in that complete conversation, and maybe we can make a disbursement that would include both the items, and then they can use their discretion as to how to spend them.
Madam Chair, with that particular item, is it possible to maybe lower the dollars to a certain level with CARES, which would get us through the end of the year, and then look at, maybe if we have additional funding, the beginning of the year that we didn't realize we were going to have, we could add some that aren't CARES dollars?
Well, I mean, I do think this will be an ongoing conversation for some time to come. That's, that's the answer to your question, yes.
I just want to make sure we don't forget it.
Ms. Wood, is there, is it possible to disaggregate the marketing campaign into components? If we're, is there, is there a number you could put on kind of a first phase through the end of the calendar year, for example?
Well, I stood my ground before and said that, you know, we want the full amount because we want it for our businesses. I'm certainly thankful for anything that you guys can give to the community to show your support for businesses. I'm sure that they will be happy to know there's some support coming from the Board of Supervisors. So to answer your question, Mr. Whitson, I'm sure we can do just about anything. I mean, you know, yeah, we can do just about anything. It's, the more we dilute the campaign, the more we cut out of it, the less effective it is. So at some point, you know, you have to look at that. We can always look for private funds. Again, that's, you know, that's an option as well.
Yeah, I think in principle, I would be okay with some kind of boost. Obviously, it's going to be an important initiative. Businesses are hurting, and I think you made the point, Ms. Smith, it doesn't necessarily have to be paid out of our CARES Act money.
Like, this isn't all the money that we have. This is all the money that we have now.
I understand. I understand that, but, I mean, well, I mean, obviously, reduced costs at the school will benefit us in the bottom line, et cetera, so it doesn't have to be, I don't believe it has to be all or nothing in the context of this CARES Act fund discussion, is my only point.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Curry, is it possible to just make a $1,000 line item for Businesses of Rappahannock and let them decide how to break it out between these two items?
A $100,000 or?
Make it $100,000 total, and then they're at the, it would be at their discretion as to how to break it out between the campaign and the business program grants.
Yes, of course. We would have to be very carefully coordinating to make sure everything's eligible. And we would have to decide very carefully how those dollars are going to flow. You know, is there going to be an agreement? And we send money to $100,000 to Businesses of Rappahannock, they sign an agreement saying, we agree that we will follow the rules, and if we don't, we'll give you the money back? Are we going to work through reimbursement, where they get a bill, or they send direct bill to us for eligible expenses? For that amount of money, we need to be really careful.
I had talked to Patrick Moni at the Regional Commission, and he was willing to help us oversee whatever program we try to undertake. He's doing similar things for other localities in the area. So like the, I think the $1.6 million at Culpeper, I mean, they don't have any other fire and rescue, any of those things. They poured all $1.6 million, Towne at Culpeper monies into tourism, and that was a little bit of a, too big a lift for the Regional Commission, but I think something the size would be right in their wheelhouse.
I did confirm with Mr. Moni today that he would be willing to do this if it was helpful to the BOR or the board or however.
I think they would be a wonderful sort of third-person neutral party, as you stated, would be appropriate.
We're certainly open to working with anyone. We can work out the details. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I could address that in the spreadsheet perhaps by listing 50,000 for each item and mark them as being included. and mark them as being included, or?
I would make it one-line item and put both items. That way, we're not ascribing a dollar amount either, and it's up to Businesses of Rappahannock as to how to spend the money.
I mean, Ms. Wood, you intimated that for the business grant program, the $100,000 wasn't a rough estimate, but you thought maybe it would end up at 75. Did I hear that correctly?
That was for the digital marketing program, Mr. ...
Oh, that was for the digital marketing?
Right. I guess I have a question. Are we still talking about doing fire and rescue disbursement out of that funding? Or did you say that you were going to do that some other way?
I mean, we could directly make payments to fire and rescue. I mean, you, it's not my program. If it's your program and we're making the disbursement, then I would think you would set up the guidelines for your program.
Right. So I'd want to work with Mr. Curry, if that's okay with you all, to figure out who needs what, because you do want to take care of fire and rescue. That's always been part of that program.
Personally, I would keep fire and rescue out of it, because to me, I mean, you're saying here on behalf of Businesses of Rappahannock, it's a small grant program for businesses, and...
Just to let them apply, is that what you're saying?
That's my, that's how I always viewed it.
Okay.
That's my, I mean, I'm just saying that for discussion.
They could certainly apply if they were eligible, but I certainly want them to feel like they can approach the Board directly as well. I don't think they should feel like they have to work through an intermediary if they're having overhead. I know Sperryville fires out about $20,000 that they need as a result of the fireworks. I don't know that giving you $100,000 is going to solve their problem.
Got you. Okay. Well, I mean, again, we're helping, you know, happy to help them in some way.
Thank you so much.
If we can do that, yeah.
I do appreciate it. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Yeah, I just think fire and rescue help should be outside of this business grant program, just for cleanliness of appropriations.
All right, what's next?
So if we take out the medium-level items and we do a lump of 100,000 instead of 200,000, then I think we've eliminated about 250,000 of the $332,000 excess.
No, that's still only 175.
So I'm showing, if you fund what you've already said you're going to fund, fund the remaining school, 88,000 from FY '20. Fund what the county has already spent in PPE and overtime. Fund the equitable share to the town. Fund PPE for county and volunteer fire and rescue that Mr. Williams requested. And then fund the other items that I've listed with priorities in the column, which is, you can knock these off or include them, air purification for the county office buildings. You can fund that. Fund the portable toilets that we've already done.
Could you reference the line item for the...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, there I see the HVAC.
Yeah, I'm at 12, okay? 13, we already, or, I saw it was at 11. 12 would be for the fire and rescue, and we already decided that that's better done through the normal process, the air purification for them. Line 13 are the portable toilets that are already distributed around the county right now. That's done. Line 14 is the contract EMS employees in Chester Gap spent to date. That's, it's either going to be paid as a fire levy expense or recognized as a CARES-eligible expense. Item 15 is another couple months of that Chester Gap expense. Then item 17 is the small added cost for the park for the second toilet while they're going through their summer program with the kids and whatnot.
So they only got, they got one there now?
There's, they added the second one in, I think, already. It's $500.
So that's already spent.
It's a rounding error, quite frankly. So if you add those in with the line 27, which is auditing work on the backend to make sure that we can track all this, and the 100,000 you just talked about, that leaves you $164,000, $165,000 left to allocate. I think that's an easy way to look, so...
And that's not touching any of the school items for fiscal year 2021?
That's right. So if you think they have about $165,000, any of the remaining rows or things we haven't even thought about, you could start allocating that 165 to any of these other rows. And I think some of those school items are, would be high on my list, particularly those that would probably be purchased anyway. So the schools has to work through this process, and so one way or another, they're going to buy those devices. So one way or another, taxpayers are going to pay for those, or something else is not going to get done and pushed off to next year.
Dr. Grimsley, would those prioritizing would be the lecture seating and the Google devices? Lecture, sorry. We all mumble these days. Lecture seating and Google devices, those two line items in '21, are those the big ones that you need clarity on? Yes?
And, you know, the desk barriers and the touchless hand sanitizer, those are ordered, right? Or will soon to be ordered. That's happening. They need to have them here. They're going to do it. It's either going to come out of their appropriation that they already have, or it's going to come out of this, you know, it's... For example, those three for the schools...
So if we look at the 85,000 for the distancing, and then the 62.6 for the Google devices, that puts us at about 148,000.
FY '20, yeah.
And then if we add 10,000 for the virtual math and reading, puts us at 158, and then we've got to get to 165, is that correct?
What about the hotspot in Sperryville?
I would love to see that happen.
The what?
The hotspot.
The hotspot in Sperryville. So I'm a little confused, because we kind of switched our...
Yeah, I apologize for flipping it the other way. And I think by doing that, you're trimming it on both ends, right?
Yep.
Things to take off the table entirely, and then, so you're definitely allocating from, and then finding how you're going to make that gap.
So if we fund the hotspot in Sperryville, then where are we now?
It'll put us at 176.
So I arbitrarily, because Mr. Sutton didn't have the information yet, took about half of the cost and put it in this table. It's $36,000, $37,000 for two years. And the guidance suggests that unless it's our normal practice and policy, we shouldn't be prepaying. So I just took a guess that, you know, about half would be a reasonable expense. Now, who knows what it would actually be? He's working with Comcast now to get an idea if they could break out the cost for that capital hit plus operational cost for first period of time.
So why is it that, why is it, it looks like duplicate upfront capital costs? Is it splitting the total upfront capital costs into two years?
So when we approached Comcast to do an estimate for us, they gave us a two-year proposal that was $36,833. Most of that money is spent upfront, right? You have to buy the equipment, you have to do the survey, you have to set the systems up. I had never planned on actually proposing, not paying for the whole thing upfront, but because of the restrictions of the CARES Act, I went back to Comcast and said, "Give me the cost of setting the system up, and then give me the cost of monthly fees." It's going to cost about $27,000 to set the system up, and the monthly fees are 250 for the service. It's like the internet service, y'all. You all can figure, may agree with that. And then $40 a month for the maintenance agreement with the Comcast company to maintain the equipment. So the initial cost that would probably, we could propose here, is around $28,000. That gets the system up and running, and it'll be throughout downtown Sperryville, so anybody can actually access it. All the parking lots will be available. Kids from the schools can use their Googles, their Google machines, and it'd help support the businesses down there as well.
Is partial funding by the Sperryville Community Alliance an option if we are partially funds program?
So, you know, we don't kind of have that type of resource. We do, we raise money for specific projects, so we don't maintain, we have about $22,000 in the bank, so we would fund some of it. What the Board has talked about is funding the piece where we'd advertise, do signage. That's why I mentioned we've talked to a private benefactor, into PATH, about possibly making up that additional resource to keep it going. The thing is, Comcast can get this up and running after you sign the paper in one week. So we could have it up and running in time of school starts, but that means I need to have the money in the pocket. You know, PATH Foundation takes a while to fill out the applications. I don't know if this private benefactor would turn around the money that quickly. So we did talk to them about paying that $27,000 initially, and then going to month-to-month, so we actually could actually get it started, and then find those resources to pay it month-to-month, if that makes sense, just like you normally do with your internet at home.
So we're going to have to be careful that we don't allocate some money for this, but it's not enough, and it falls flat, and we haven't, won't be able to use the money somewhere else. Does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I think we can logically agree, we prepay for a fiscal year all the time, right? We have maintenance contracts and things like that that we would do on a fiscal year basis. Going out more than a year, it's not typical for us. Will anybody ever audit this to that level of detail? I don't know, but I don't want to come back to you in a year and say about that $24,000.
And the reason we did two years is just like when you get internet, when you do a longer contract, it's cheaper. A one-year contract's much more expensive. So we thought, let's give it a two-year contract, keep the cost down, and give it a chance to really work in the community.
Now, the Board could fund the share of this project out of, with CARES dollars that is clearly within the realistic period, and then fund another $8,000 through just non-restricted dollars.
So it sounds like if we funded this 18,000 to start it, then the organization could work on some matching funds to get it started, and then we could revisit it later and reallocate some monies for ongoing operation or reimbursement. So, I mean, I think the 18,000 is a good start, and that would mean that there would be about, about 10,000, you'd be about 10,000 short.
So keep in mind, the 18 was a swag.
Right, well, I understand, but the 18 is all we have accounted for, and we're actually trying to take money off of the list.
Yes, no, I see what's going on here. I just want to let, so 18,000, I wouldn't be able to get up and running until I secure other resources, and as I suggested, we've already gone to a couple of other resources. I would love to have it up and running before school gets going, so people have, kids and teachers have access to it, but I'll leave it to you guys to make a decision.
And I guess it's your comfort level, Mr. Curry, that we could fund it to $18,000. Be funding it beyond that is questionable, or that we could get reimbursement beyond that is questionable?
No, I think we can, if we have a clear line of sight to understand what is the one-year cost of this implementation and then the first year, I think that that would be eligible.
Okay.
And so if Comcast can provide that information, I would be comfortable from an auditing standpoint with that. And so Mr. Sutton's saying that's probably on the order of, I mean, 28, 29,000.
They gave me a number, but I haven't actually scrubbed it to the point that I'm comfortable with it. So I'll talk to them tomorrow and get you another update.
I think 18's a good placeholder for now for this item, and then, you know, we can take it from there. If we add it to the 158 that we've already talked about for school expenses, that takes us to 176 that we've made up of the 165, I think, that we discussed.
Yeah.
Is that, how close do we need to be to this, Mr. Curry? Like, how dialed in do we want to be?
So the Board has a healthy savings account, and any dollars that you allocate over and above the $643,000 would have to come from somewhere.
Right.
That $643,000 is in your bank account right now. And we have primarily what is an accounting problem right now, or process. We must account for those $643,000 using eligible expenses.
Correct.
And that's what we have to have come December 30th, is a very clear table file that shows we have $643,004 of CARES Act eligible expenses. And if we have that, the state, federal government is going to say, "Enjoy your money. Good job." If we don't have that, they're going to ask for their money back. So beyond those CARES dollars that are sitting in your savings account, there are dollars that you allocate all the time. We went through the budget process, and you could amend your budget to add dollars to the budget at any time for really just about any purpose you want. If those dollars, and when we appropriate these dollars, if they exceed 1% of your budget, which is around $400,000, you will have to have a public hearing, and you will have to hear from the public on, you know, all of this, and we will have to go through that in the next month or so to get all these remaining CARES dollars into the budget, because they're not in the budget right now. So that's a long-winded way of saying, you can add dollars to these to make up for a difference. If it's within $10,000, we won't know if we're $10,000 over or under, because some of these costs are estimates.
Correct.
Could we, it would be useful for me at least, if we could just quickly go through and identify kind of our definite spends?
Okay, before we go any further, I just got one comment about this Sperryville hotspot, and that is, first of all, I'm in favor of it. Secondly, you know, we need to promote these things for telecommuting and the students, et cetera. But, you know, we're starting with Sperryville here, and I just wouldn't want the other villages and communities to feel like they, that this was favoritism, and that, you know, what about Slant Hill, what about Little Washington, what about Amosville?
Amosville.
And what about Laurel Mills?
Laurel Mills, I think is going to be trouble, because they don't have cable.
I just want to throw that out there, that it's, we could get a little backlash from this, but I do think that if Rappahannock County can move toward, you know, more telecommuting, the better. And so it's probably a good step forward.
Well, I did think about that, Mr. Parrish, and one way that I sort of framed it in my mind is that this could be a pilot program to see if it's successful, to where we haven't had to do the full lift on figuring out all the logistics, but we do fund it and put it in place and see if it's successful. And then we know if for $30,000 or $40,000, we can replicate this template in other villages or in the town and have it be successful. And it does allow us an opportunity to do this in a way where it can mostly be, you know, paid for by this CARES Act funding. So, I mean, I don't serve on the broadband committee, but it seems like sort of a logical step to helping serve the issue of technology access in the county. And that's really how I kind of sorted that out in my mind. It is a first step. It's nice to be able to be the first one to do it. And I think, I think that that, you know, should be a ray of hope to other communities that might be interested in pursuing this in the future.
Very well said.
Madam Chair, I would be interested in seeing what the plan is. I know Comcast has routers all over the country at this point. Everywhere that they did an install, including Griffin Tavern, they put their own router in there as well. So I'm just interested in knowing why we can't just have more free Xfinitys instead of...
So Debbie, I'll send you all the diagram. I mean, it's a pretty detailed diagram. They showed me where all the antennas are in downtown Sperryville, where the refuges will be. And by the way, I should have said that, I actually called this a pilot. I intended this to be, does it work? And if it works in Sperryville, can it be used in other communities? I think lighting up Rappahannock County is just a great way to put this county on the map for bringing in telecommuter, teleworkers, and making it a great place to live. So, yeah, I'll share the, I think, I think they actually have it. But yes, exactly, that's the idea, one of the antennas goes on my building.
Yep, great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sutton.
Why do we want to bring new people in?
My Chris.
Why do we want to bring new people in?
I'm sorry, Mr. Fraser, did you have something? It's hard for me to see you down there.
I was just thinking out loud, I mean, I think we need to try and take care of the folks we have here, but we, you said something about bringing new people in. Well, I'm not trying to have a conversation with you, I just, I don't know that we really want to be worrying about bringing new people into county. We've got to take care of who's here.
Well, I mean, I don't disagree with that, especially right now, but I do know that there are a lot of people that are working from home that have never had to figure that out before, and may have a less-than-ideal signal at their residence, and so they, a lot of people have been parking in parking lots, you know, trying to get a good signal to get their day's work done. And if this makes it a little bit easier and takes the onus off the businesses having to provide... to provide the service, I think it may be a good solution, not just for Sperryville, but for other locations too. Of course, and then if the cell tower could get turned on, that would be wonderful as well.
Amistville Baptist Church and Hackley Store have been trying to furnish hotspot.
And the school's done a wonderful job of getting out that information for where they are available. And I think that's served a great service to a lot of people.
So, Mr. Whitson, did you want to go top to bottom?
Yeah, could we just go through and mark what we're sure of at this point? And then just give a, give the total? I think we're at 670 or something like that.
Yeah, and you probably can't see, I went ahead and changed the top right, where it said note, I've got the...
I'm just gonna mark on my sheet here so that I have a visual.
So Row 1, that's already approved by the Board, so that's done. Row 2 is the additional FY20 expense for the schools, and I think we've already discussed that that makes a lot of sense. And that's in the total. Row 3 is the county expenses for the PPE and the Sneeze Guards and all that, that's done. And it's an estimate. We're pulling all the reports together. Row 4 is our overtime expense. That's a high number, but it's just an estimate. Row 5 is, I guess, one of the first question marks. It's the lecture seating in the high school auditorium.
But we're, just to be clear though, once we're running up to this total, it's in, right?
It's in right now.
Okay, thank you. Don't say question mark, don't get confused.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Dr. Grimsley, just for a reference, does that include any other work to the auditorium? Because I know that auditorium needs quite a bit of work. Thank you very much. I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Curry.
Item number 6 are the Google devices. They're shown as being in the total. Item number 7 right now is not in the total, but will be expended. Item number 8, the virtual teaching for math and reading, is shown as in the total. Item number 9, which is the distribution to Washington, is in the total.
Does the Town of Washington put forward any expenses at all?
No, and, no.
No.
That is on a reimbursement basis.
Okay.
As we get closer to December 30th, if we don't see something from them, we will either want to prompt it or spend the money ourselves.
It might, I mean, I think we could, just to make sure that we don't get in that position, couldn't we, we know the amount, we know the share, set it aside, pay it from our...
So I think you're already doing that with Row number 7? If it's, if Row number 7, which is all this PPE and extra desks, barriers and all that with the schools, that's all eligible expense. That's, all of that probably will be spent, whether it's a CARES accounted for dollar or not. And so if any of these other expenditures don't actually come to bear, you could just recognize those.
I would suggest we move the Town of Washington out until they come through with actual expenses.
Well, you have to provide them an equitable share.
Right, but couldn't we just hold, maintain a placeholder that they're entitled to $8,000 of reimbursements related to COVID-19, but can be paid outside of CARES Act funds?
No, it has to be CARES Act funds, right?
Have you paid this money out already?
Oh, because it's, I see. Because it's another, I see, because it's a, it's another government, it's like an affiliated party.
Right.
I think we just have to do it. There's a formula for it and we have to follow the formula and get it cleared from the ledger.
Okay, I'll leave it alone.
Item number 10 is the PPE for county and volunteer fire and rescue companies. That's in the total right now. Item 11 is the HVAC air purification for the county office buildings. That's in right now.
Do you think there's enough leeway in their regular budgets that they could, that they could carry that themselves if they needed to?
This is for the county office buildings, number 11. And that's a quote I have from our HVAC vendor.
Okay.
Item 12 is the fire and rescue. That's just, that's an operational expense for the fire and rescue companies and we may see it in a future Fire Levy check run that will be reimbursable because it's an operational expense.
Let's handle, let's handle that as out.
Yeah, that's out.
Okay, good.
Okay. The portable toilets that are already out and about, which is about a $4,000 expense for all the months, that's in. The Chester Gap independent contractor EMS costs that has happened in FY20, that's in. The next few months of, of that same contractor cost is in the total.
And we do, we are moving forward on the assumption that we do need that, correct?
Yes.
For sometime, for the foreseeable future?
I've only priced in two months.
Okay.
Now, just like the other expenses for fire and rescue, that's an operational expense. And so if it's not funded with CARES Act dollars or accounted for and as eligible CARES Act expense, the expense is going to happen if, you know, either way, if we want to have a EMS responder in that area of the county. The county park restroom is not in. The county park second toilet, $500, is in the total. The telephony upgrade for the county office is not in. The county software enterprise resource is not in for going to the cloud. The web-based services, and we didn't talk much about this right now. I think this is a good goal for us moving forward, that is web-based for permitting and different types of software and bill pay to allow our citizens and staff to do things through online as opposed to across the counter. That's something that we should be looking for in the coming years, but that is out right now.
I just have a quick question. I mean, I think that's good for it to be out. We can probably just figure out a way to pay for that. But Culpeper has a good system.
Yeah, and so this is linked into our financial software. It's just a feature on that. The county office's computer conversion, this is really just a lump sum opportunity is out right now, $10,000 to help convert some computers to laptops.
How impactful was, I mean, I think all of our office workers were still in their offices throughout...
Right.
...the last few months, but they just didn't open the doors. Is that correct?
For the most part. So the concern is where we have critical staff that are in quarantine or some issue like that. And they could work from home if they had the means to do so. So there are probably a few that will transition anyway, with or without this funding with the current budget. The wide format scanner, that really goes part and parcel with the web-based services to be able to scan plans for buildings and things into online, that's out. There was a general request for support for your private schools and I never got a dollar number, but an interest to be considered, that is not included. The marketing campaign on its own is included below and combined, so it's not in on this row. The hotspot's shown as $18,000 is included. The small business grant is included in the combined number below. The increased audit costs of $15,000 is included. Nonprofit public health expenses, this is PPE-type expenses for a local nonprofit, not included. The combined $100,000 for your marketing and small business program is included. And then a request from the alcohol substance abuse awareness program for $3,000 is not included. So all that together, all the included items puts you a little over $11,000 over the $643,004.
I would just ask too, that we return there, item number 28, the local nonprofit, oh, there's only a medium confidence level attached to that. But I know some nonprofits are having to incur additional operating expenses in order to follow the guidelines for operating in the pandemic. And even if it was only $2,000 or $3,000, I think it would be good to include some money in there.
Yeah, I know of one that had a request, and so I assume there are probably multiple. That's why I showed it as $10,000.
Could we maybe include it as a $5,000 line item? Is that anything close enough for the accounting purposes that you're trying to reach?
We can include whatever the Board wants to include.
I mean, I think, I think that would be a worthwhile thing to include. I don't know how the other board members feel about it. There's item number 28, the local nonprofit public health expenses, to include that as half of the cost indicated. So instead of it being a $10,000 line item, just leave it $5,000. So if there's anything that nonprofits are incurring that they're not finding a way to cover, that they, that they may be able to be covered by this funding.
So is that going in the right direction? Let's go in the wrong direction, but that's back to, a lot of these items are estimates and what the actual cost may be, over, under. Any complete overage would have to come from a different funding source than what it would be your savings account, which is bolstered by the fact of the way that school funding works.
I mean, I'd rather have a little bit over in there and then if things don't spend their complete amount, we still manage to spend it all. I mean, I'm not sure how the other board members feel about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So like, this is, we have a spending issue and we have an accounting issue. This is really the accounting issue. At the end of the day, we need to account for all of these dollars. Parallel, you don't want authorized expenditure for more dollars than you want to actually pay. So there's two very closely related things, but they're not exactly the same.
So if we put the $5,000 in, how close are we? I'm so sorry, that screen is really hard to...
Yeah. You're $16,000, 16, 685, over. That's not much. And we can leave it like that and go with it? Yes, or do we need to, you can leave it like that, that's fine. This would be a roadmap for me to be coming back for supplemental appropriations to budget, actually give these dollars into the budget so that they can be spent out of the budget. So, for example, the $100,000 for the combined marketing, small business grant, however Business Rappahannock wants to do it, that can't be spent until the Board appropriates those dollars into appropriate budget line in your budget. And then the, then the Board is gonna have to authorize expenditure at some point in time to reimburse it. So this is a very early part of this entire process. It's just something we approved tonight. To the greatest extent that you can, I think it would be good. I don't think anything's written in stone necessarily, except for the fact that, you know, the schools needs to know if they can move forward. Business Rappahannock needs to know that they can move forward and start, you know, working out these stuff. Madam Chair, can we take a quick break?
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess, 5, 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Three and four, those, that's money already spent, it's $30,000, it's county overhead, basically, which, in my view, need not be spent out of CARES Act funds. And my thought was, just thinking about my business constituents in the Town of Washington and, and Ms. Wood's very impassioned plea for relief, I certainly would feel better if we could take that off, take those numbers out of the CARES Act spreadsheet and maybe try to get her that equivalent amount so that she can initiate some kind of marketing campaign leading into the fall. Just a suggestion, I don't know if there's agreement on the Board, but I would feel better about trying to, trying to put this CARES Act fund toward businesses and their revitalization after, you know, possibly difficult time as opposed to paying county overhead expenses with the same, just a suggestion. In that way, I think she would end up with $130,000 with seven, you know, potentially 75 for the small business grants, which would not be contemplated for any kind of fire and rescue, really, which we would handle separately outside of CARES Act funds. And then, I guess, in theory, maybe 60 for some kind of promotion activity or a lesser amount, just an idea.
My response to Mr. Whitson when he mentioned that is that we've, we closed FY20 books, we, expenses are under the appropriations for each of the budget departments that those costs roll up to. So you don't need to infuse additional dollars into any of those departments from CARES Act dollars to make it work. But CARES Act allows you to recognize expenses that are different than what you expected to spend it on, even if it's not more, if it's different, it's still okay. So we don't need, per se, the CARES Act dollars to balance our 20 books, FY20 books, for the county side. There are advantages to doing it on the school side. So it really doesn't make a difference to the county if these dollars are accounted for this way. At the end of the day, it's dollars that are gonna be spent. And it's a $38,000 additional dollars that would be invested in this particular way. There's no reason why, you can't take it off the list up on the top.
Or maybe even 25 of that amount for a total of 125, which would be a little more than half of what was requested with the $200,000 aggregate, which is really, in my view, direct relief to our business community.
And then maybe could we return that additional $5,000 over to the, what was originally line 19, the cloud migration? I think that would, if we're gonna look at something else to possibly spend money on, something that...
I think that's something that we can get done in the current budget...
Absolutely.
...without CARES.
Okay.
I think we can find a way to make that happen.
But using, using this CARES money is a way to save money from our, from the taxpayers, isn't it? This is kind of like hand away free money.
It's eventually all taxpayers' money.
Yeah, it's, it's, which pocket you take it out of. It's really hard to conceive how these dollars work. And that's why I keep talking about it being an accounting process versus an expenditure process. At the end of the day, a certain number of dollars are going to leave the county's bank account to buy goods or pay for services. And, and those may be more than $643,000, but some of those were going to be spent anyway in your FY20 budget, right? And so the question is, you can potentially overlap some of that accounting process with dollars you already spent in FY20 and then keep the cash in your bank. And it just confuses things.
I was gonna say, I think we're really going down a rabbit hole here and I thought we were almost out of the rabbit hole.
So I have no issue with, with taking the marks off of the rows for three, for item 3 and 4 and increasing any other line the Board wants to increase. I'm confident that you have the funds to make that happen.
I think we're, I mean, barely over and then we get into fungible money, so it seems pretty close if we took that approach. I just wanted to make one last try for the business community at a modest, a relatively modest level compared to the original request.
I'm not clear if there's consensus on that matter. I'm not sure if there's consensus to do that.
I'm not either. I'm just putting it out there.
Madam Chair, I can say that I've received several emails from my constituents supporting the need for a campaign to help the businesses in the county. Fall tends to be Christmas. If you're in the retail world, you understand that. If fall is not strong, I do also am concerned with... If fall is not strong, I do also am concerned with how many businesses we may lose. And if we can help a little bit with marketing and getting something going, it's better than nothing.
So if we are to move those two line items, and did I hear that the idea was to put 20,000 of that into the combined line item for businesses at Rapid Handic?
I was going to... My suggestion was remove 30, and I think in the end put 25 back down. So just retaining the original two separate line items, in the aggregate, it would basically be 125,000.
Then I would suggest that the other item that we should really consider is some of the laptop funding for county employees, and maybe fund five instead of 10, and then that would put the additional $5,000 back in that line item, 21. If we increase the small business grant and marketing campaign to 125, and then put the additional 5,000 into staff laptops, I think that would be money well spent in the event of an emergency where people really did have to work from home.
Mr. Curry, I don't have my calculator with me, and I can't believe I came without one. What's 125 as a percentage of 6? What was our original amount, 640? So about 15% or 17%, somewhere in there?
19.4.
19.
I don't know that we need to be concerned with what percentage of this money is. I think we need to be concerned with, does it actually qualify for that? And can it be used for that? And should we use it for that? I mean, just because it qualifies doesn't mean that we should use it for that. Like I said, some of the business people that I represent contacted me, and they feel that there's not going to be enough money left for them to get any of it, so they were opposed to having any of it moved over there.
But I think, I might not correct that they would be eligible under the grant program.
They're not going to apply because they don't feel that they're going to get it.
Or what?
They're not even going to apply for it because they don't feel they're going to get it. If you take, almost everybody in the county is either self-employed or...
Yeah.
You know, so there's not going to be enough money. It would have had to have been a large pot of money, and we couldn't have took the whole 643 and gave everybody $1,000 of self-employment. Everybody's hurting. Even the guy that paints houses, they don't want him in their house. So, you know, how's he going to qualify? He definitely gets hurt, but he doesn't have any employees, he's self-employed. He doesn't feel that he's even going to get any of that money.
Well, I think that's probably why it's important that we work with businesses at Rapid Handic, and my preference would be the regional commission to develop guidelines and to make people feel comfortable applying for the program as we develop it, or as it's developed. I mean, I understand people are skeptical, and there is only so much money to go around. But I do think there is a place for business in this money, and, you know, we still have to exhibit the same conscientious oversight that we do with all the money that we spend. But how we do that is a path we do have to start down. Did you have something to add, Ms. Wood?
I think what it is, is people are going to be, and they have been, they were the first time around, they were simply reluctant to go in front of people and ask for this money.
I mean, I will say that I know it was a great program. I tried to alert a lot of people to it, as many people as I could. I know a lot of people applied. I know people I never thought would apply, that would be averse to asking for help, applied because they really truly needed it. And I do very much appreciate it, and it fills a vital role. And I've heard from some of my constituents that they, that are single proprietor businesses, that they do need additional help. There are sectors where their business has not picked up. And, you know, they've looked at some of the nonprofits, and they don't qualify for some of the assistance that's out there. And so I do think there is a role to be developed here, and I don't have a problem with it being 125,000. If we're going to dissolve those other line items, other items, three and four, and return that money, I would just ask that we do also with the laptops at 5,000 as an expense as well.
To prolong this, as this period ends on December 30th, that'll be the time when we're wrapping up the audit. And that'll be the time when the board understands how your position overall has changed over the last year, and how much you'll be adding to your fund balance. And so as this funding source, assuming no other federal funding source comes along, ends, the board may be positioned at that time to invest additional dollars into the community from your fund balance if it's deemed to be necessary at that time, based on the situation on the ground at that time. So you wouldn't have that information, you would know. I suspect you'll be adding to your fund balance in a significant way at the close of FY '20.
So are we close enough? I mean, I think there's a consensus to make that change.
We should hear from everyone, I think. I don't want to push it too hard.
Are you comfortable with those changes, Mr. Parrish? Not to put you on the spot.
Well, I think it's got, you know, potential, and so it may be worth the gamble. And, you know, obviously, I don't know the right answer.
Yeah.
And I think by lumping those together, it gives you some flexibility if you see a more immediate need for small business or sole proprietor assistance that, in your group's mind, outweighs in importance, the need to kick off a marketing campaign, then certainly would leave that to your discretion. Because it's very possible the economy shuts down again, I hope it doesn't, in which case people will need more direct assistance as opposed to indirect in the form of long-term promotion. So I think by lumping it together, we kind of put the onus on you to determine the best way forward, but understanding the vast majority of it, or the majority of it, should be direct assistance to those who seek it.
Any other comments? Are we ready to make a motion in regards to this disbursement? And if so, Mr. Curry, what exactly are you looking for?
I believe I've captured everything that's been discussed. It's in the table, was it shown there and saved? And it would be to authorize the allocation of CARES Act funds as displayed in the current funding options table.
Yeah, I would just suggest that we get a clean revised version that reflects, you know, maybe even timestamp it as 9:30 PM, what we agreed upon. I mean, that could be done after the fact, but I think just for public record purposes, that would be important.
All right, so do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Frazier. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
So just to recap, we took the, we took out three and four.
Correct, knowing that that money had essentially already been spent.
We added, how much to the small businesses?
25,000.
25, and then the other 5,000 went to the...
Line item 21, laptops funded half of that line item.
All right.
Thank you, everyone. That takes us to the last item of business, financial and long-range planning. Mr. Curry, could you queue us up with the items that you attached to the agenda for this, please?
I wasn't sure exactly what you would want to help guide you on this discussion, so what I shared for you was the debt service slide from my budget presentation that showed your expenditures going out into the next several years for your existing bonds and when they'll be paid off. A lot of times when you think about long-range planning, you're thinking about those debt service payments, when they'll expire, and that may be the good time to think about ramping up other debt service if you have big projects to come along. So, for example, in FY '21, you have about $380,000 of debt services going out the door, and by '26, it'll be zero. So you could arguably find $380,000 a year in debt, mortgage payments, so to say, that you could pick up in '26 that would fund X dollars in capital project. So that's why I wanted to show you that, how that schedule is going to play out over time.
And not to interrupt, but just adding, what kind of, how many millions of dollars would the 385,000 cover?
More now than it was before, with the rates dropping down.
So four, or five, or six million?
Did the math before for the radio system. I would say it was, you know, a penny got you like six million on 10-year money or something. I'd have to go back now.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to guess 150,000.
That's 140,000 million at least.
Yeah.
What was your estimate, Cruz?
Four, five million on paper.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, it's a key question.
So those are, as you begin to think about your long-range financial plans, this is part of it, and the other, how you're going to pay for something is important if you have expenditures. And then what are you going to pay for? And that was the other graphic that I put up was just, this is the five-year CIP program that was included in the budget. There are things that are not, you know, very clearly included on this, which would be, is the county interested in building a building to stop paying rent for where building officials and whatnot are? That's not here. But as we just saw in that FY '26 is when your debt service would be expired and would allow you to do that. Will the courts come along and suggest that you should build a courthouse? That's not in here. So those big, long-range capital projects are important. The other things that you would want to be thinking about for financial planning is, are there any policies that the board wants to put in place to ensure you have a certain fund balance target as you're adopting your budgets year over year? And do you... When is it okay to pull money from your fund balance for one-time expenses? And when is it, you know, when should you not do it? Those are policy-type questions that the board can get into discussing from a financial planning standpoint. Long-range operational funding, budgeting and planning is not really a big issue for us because our annual operating costs are pretty stable outside of debt service. So it really boils down to capital and what's coming down the pipe with capital. And the study that is underway right now and has been somewhat stalled because of COVID, that is going to really begin to answer some of those questions, or prompt some questions on what kind of investment needs to be made into your existing structures, and then what is the next step?
I wondered, because so much of what we're looking at in this discussion is buildings and grounds related. If it wouldn't make sense, you know, here we are at 9:30, it's obviously not a great time to start a discussion about this. But I kind of think that maybe, we talked about doing this once a month, and so I'm of the opinion that maybe for August and September, we should loop the building committee into our work session. Is that an option, Mr. Curry, so that we can work through these questions? It just seems like if we have a committee assigned to do that, then we should work with that committee to get this planned. And I'm not sure how the other committee members, or the other board members feel about it.
I feel like we have this Wiley Wilson study out, so that's foundational material we have. Citizens on that committee, I agree with you, who've looked at it, reviewed it, it's been released publicly, I believe, right?
Yes.
So to me, that's a great starting point. I agree with Ms. Smith that we got to talk about buildings. We have to talk about building upgrades and prioritization in that regard, so.
The next big question for the building study is, it answers the question of how much space do you have and what condition is it in? And so the follow-on question is, what are you going to do about it?
Correct.
And the engineering, architectural engineering company is ready to pull together scope of services to, you know, answer that, pull out projects here and there to upgrade this building, fix this issue for different items that were identified. So that next process is developing that scope and fee to do that design work of what are you going to do about it? And that's, you know, several small pockets of that, and then there's some really big looming questions of rent versus build. And if those can be built into scope to get much more detailed analysis of, well, what can you build for your money? You can buy a lot with financing right now, and if the board really wanted to look long-term, if there was ever a time to borrow money, it's now.
Yeah.
But, you know, is that still, is that the best way to do it, long-term financial planning? And so you can have that expert rough out the costs, and you begin to make some of those decisions.
So to Ms. Smith's point, for our next work session, other than the additional members of the building committee who aren't already represented here, would we want somebody from Wiley Wilson there to answer questions and kind of work through these, this notion of prioritization and rent versus renovate?
Yeah, I think so, and perhaps before then, begin to really try to sketch out a scope of services, the next scope of services for them. Now, while this was our original plan and final plan going in, we've kind of sequestered most of these funds off to the side in the capital for the beginning of the fiscal year, not knowing what our revenue picture was going to look like. And so, while planning is, doesn't cost a lot right now, actually implementing anything in the first half of the fiscal year, you're probably going to have to put that off until we see what our sales tax and meals and lodging revenue is, and then get a comfort level that the revenue is flowing like we thought it should before you actually start investing many of the dollars.
It seems like, because, and I'm glad you brought that up, obviously, we're going to have to do the best we can in terms of real-time analysis of our revenue picture going forward, just for, I guess, this kickoff that Ms. Smith has proposed, which I think is a great idea. Would it also make sense to have our county treasurer there just to give us at that time a two-month snapshot, July?
Probably way too early, because a lot of those revenue sources are trailing.
All right, so we're not ready to do that analysis, okay.
They're either monthly in trailing or quarterly in trailing? We're just not going to know?
Maybe the second work session in September.
I think my preference would be to have one work session with just this board and the building committee, and then have the next work session bring in Wiley Wilson, sort of let us have the family discussion first before we bring in company and kind of get the groundwork laid and all get on the same page, and then bring in the professional consultant to really sort of explain to them what we had in our discussion and figure out a way forward for this. And that way, I think we accomplish, you know, I don't want to say accomplish this in two meetings, but we figure out a way forward in two meetings.
I was just thinking that the starting point for our discussion is going to be the study. I just thought it might be useful to have the author in the study, you know, to answer questions, but I mean, you know what?
I think we should reverse the process and have the study first, and then we can... We should reverse the process and have the study first, and then we could react off of that.
Okay. All right, so we'll have Wiley Wilson here, we'll reach out to them and see if we can make arrangements for them to be here in August to discuss the study, and we'll loop in our building committee folks and, and start that discussion. Any other thoughts as to what we should be working on in these, in these, I think that's pretty ambitious for the next two work sessions, but I, I did want to just hear if anybody else had specifics they thought we should be working on.
It's a good plan.
I think it's a very good place to start, right there.
Yep.
I know the other thing we have on the back burner is the personnel study, but I think if we can get through the building, the building work in August, September, we can take up personnel maybe toward the end of the year. Is that a, is that a clear path forward, Mr. Curry, or do you need any?
Yes, we'll have to work out timing on those, and...
Noticing, I guess, is something to...
I'm, I'm planning to be away sometime in September, so, I'm just not sure exactly when, I have to ask my boss.
Okay.
Don't let that get out. Thank you, Gary, I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, I am wondering if any, if the building committee or if anybody's looking into grants available to correct some of these old historic buildings.
We, we looked into that.
We've had a lot of conversation, most of the time those are tax credit type projects that don't do anything for the county.
We, we don't pay taxes anyway, so we don't get tax credits. There's a convoluted program where you basically sell your courthouse to the private contractor, then they do the work and they get the tax credits, and then you somehow do a lease-back type of program, and it, it's really, looks shady.
Yeah, doesn't sound good.
I think it definitely should be part of our ongoing discussion, because it's really two pieces, it's fix stuff, build stuff, and how to pay for it. So the how to pay for it discussion should definitely include other non-tax burden, non-debt related financing of these projects, so...
Always good to find outside sources of revenues.
Well, if we're supporting that much in bonds currently, I mean, it would make sense that we could, we can take up those options in the future. Any other discussion in regards to this agenda item? All right, with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parrish. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.